Well, hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I want to welcome those joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you joining us here in person. We're delighted to have you today. Looking at the order of business of our meeting, when you walked in, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We encourage you to do that so you can follow along with us. If you have any questions about any of the information that we're reviewing, any of the supporting documents, you can always go online, sedgwickcounty.org, and check those out. Two hundred and forty-two pages in this entire agenda packet today, so a lot of supporting documents. We've got a wonderful meeting planned with an executive session, I believe, at the end, so I want to get us right to work. Why don't we get started? Call the meeting to order for Wednesday, June 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
If vacation to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Hey, good morning, Nicole. She's running. Don't trip. We've got time. Very athletic. Good, Nicole.
Just a little pep in my step. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. The Sedgwick County tag offices are making changes to improve their customer experience during the busiest days of the month. They will no longer handle walk-in title work from the 27th through the 2nd of each month and will instead focus on renewals and select services to reduce wait times and keep lines moving. Here's a short video about this change, and County Treasurer Brandy Bailey is here to comment and answer any questions.
No one likes waiting in line. That's why the Sedgwick County Tag Offices are making changes to speed up our customer service on the busiest days of the month. From the 27th through the 2nd of each month, our offices are usually packed. So from now on, during these days, my staff will focus on the services that take less time to keep the lines moving. That means tag renewal, lien releases, and other services that are quick and easy will be provided on a walk-in basis. But customers needing title work, which takes much longer, will have to schedule an appointment. It's easy to do on our website or through the Q-List app. Thanks for your patience, as Sedgwick County works to serve you even better.
Good video. Appreciate that, Brandy. Welcome. Our Treasurer, Brandy Bailey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just as the video said, we're just trying to improve the process and speed up the lines during those busiest times of the month. I have pulled some numbers, and actually, for the last three months during those particular days, 27th through the 2nd, we averaged 1,750 transactions per day between all the offices. So this is just helping to keep those lines moving and getting people in and out those busiest days. And with that, I have...
That Wichita has recently... So I thought that we... Emergency management to give...
Yes. Yes, we... To the other extreme of... Very busy with what... Floods to extreme weather. Yet, so... About the events of June 4th, flash flood, where we really got a lot of rain in a short amount of time, and we had a lot of street flooding, and we did have some homes that sustained some damage. Excuse me. So during that event, again, 3rd through 4th of June, we have what we call the flash flood emergency, which is very rare. Usually, we have flash flood warnings that kind of lets us know, but flash flood emergency means that is life-threatening. We want people to stay put. We don't want folks on the roads because there is life-threatening risks out there. So that did happen on the 3rd. So kind of just a quick recap of the rainfall totals. Throughout Sedgwick County, we had everything from a couple of inches in the west almost to seven inches, almost eight inches, on the east side of town, so in a very short amount of time. Just some statistics on what that resulted in is we had a surge between 12:00 and 4:00 PM with our 911 calls, where we had 555 calls, 226 between 1:00 and 2:00 PM, and 95 of those were water rescue calls. And again, that was during that flash flood emergency. We were like, people need to stay off the roads. So our first responders were very, very busy on the 3rd with that flash flood emergency. What we really need is we need folks to report their flood damages. Damage assessments for floods are very complicated. It's not like a tornado where we can drive down and do what we call windshield surveys so we can see where the damage is and try to align resources. We cannot, if we don't have exterior water lines on homes, we cannot tell if people have flooded basements and flooded first-floor levels. So the state helped us create a public damage reporting survey where folks can go in and complete their own assessment about what did they sustain during this flood event. We really need folks to let us know. Again, this is really the only way for us to find out if there's any assistance that we can provide to some of these homeowners and renters that were impacted. We did do a media release on Dune 10, so this is that same survey. I know we've got more than 39 folks who need assistance, and that's how many reports that we've received. So again, I encourage folks to really fill this out, let us know what the needs are, and we will do our best to try to align resources to help people recover. Financial assistance is kind of the biggest thing we hear, folks, is they, you know, floods are expensive, and cleanup is expensive, and rebuilding, replacing some of those personal belongings is expensive. Unfortunately, we did not meet FEMA thresholds for this, even though this is a big impact for our community. Our thresholds are $2.7 million of uninsured losses, so we're just not going to get that public assistance for this flood event. However, we do believe we're going to get Small Business Administration assistance. We're going through that process right now with Butler County. This is low-interest loans, and I want to reemphasize that. It is loans. It is not free money. It is money that needs to be paid back. But the Small Business Administration provides very low interest, and they do long-term loan payback times. Going through that process to align that to come here into Wichita to set up a customer service center, it's taking a little bit of time to get folks together. But again, we need that damage assessment done. We need to be able to communicate what the needs are for the community. I don't think I need anything more on that. And then we do have a resource page set up. We were able to acquire 56 cleanup kits that may help folks clean out some of their basements and first-floor levels. We've got buckets that have like gloves and masks and suits and things for folks to kind of, you know, help them get through that mud debris that we know may be in people's basements. We have our webpage that also talks about debris removal. It also talks about if there's property owner issues, especially with the city of Wichita, they have neighborhood inspections numbered to call if there's folks struggling with information with property owners. Wichita Assistance also complete a reported issue webpage. And then if there's insurance company conflicts, the State Commissioner has offered to help with that with a phone number and also email. So again, encourage folks, visit that resource page and see if there's things already lined up on there to help folks that may be struggling with some things. So floods are very complicated. Again, recovery is hard. If people don't tell us what their damages are, we really cannot tell what is happening to align resources. So we need folks to let us know what they need.
That's good, Julie. Good public service announcement there. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I do think because of the drought that we've been in for the last several years that we have lulled asleep a bit when it comes regards to floods, and I know there's other conversations that we're having about how do we collaborate better with the other, with all 20 cities in Sedgwick County on stormwater management and what this looks like.
Yep.
And there are some ideas that are being put on the table. We're going to be visiting with the cities about that, and I think we can have a collaborative effort. So you'll be at the table helping us shape those outcomes and appreciate all the work you do.
And we do want folks to still pay attention. We do have more rain in the forecast, like she mentioned, so, and you know, sometimes the forecast will say we're expecting a little bit of rain, and then we get seven inches of rain in a short time. So it's a beast. So I just need folks to pay attention and have a plan. If floods come, where are they going to go? How are they going to get there? That kind of thing.
Okay. And you might, forgive me, I'm forgetting that what we, the civic ready alerts.
Yeah, yes.
Would you mind just for the public, how can they sign up for civic ready alerts?
Absolutely. So the civic ready alerts is a free subscription to mass notifications. So when we have flash flood watches or just flood watches, they can sign up to receive that either through email, text messages, and/or phone calls, and it's free to the person. We just need folks to go into our webpage, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. Okay. And you can click on to receive those alerts. Now, those flash flood emergencies, we're going to sound off the wireless emergency alerts. That's used very reservingly, that is for that flash flood emergency where we need folks to like, no kidding, don't get on the roads. But to get that heads up, that lead time, we really need folks to sign up for that and know that this may be coming and make, so they have time to prepare.
Well, you guys were really good with sounding the alarms and all the notifications on the civic ready stuff, so I wanted the public to be aware that they need to...
And I do want to give credit to the National Weather Service. We did report a lot of what we were getting through the dispatch of calls of people being stranded and feeding that into the National Weather Service is what activates that wireless emergency alert. So, yeah, absolutely. So civic ready alerts, again, we don't sign people up for that. You have to go in and just click on it, fill out your information, and then you can get that heads up and morally time to prepare for these things.
It's a great service, so thank you. Okay. Any questions for Julie?
All right, thank you.
Okay, appreciate you. Thanks for all the good work.
Thank you, Julie, for the update. In response to the storms and to support other city initiatives within the county, we are holding a free tree debris drop-off event in our West Yard, our Public Works West Yard, which is located at 4701 Southwest Street. This will take place from Thursday, June 26th to Saturday, June 28th, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 2:30 PM. This is a temporary disposal site for Sedgwick County residents only and not businesses. Only storm-related tree debris, like branches and twigs, will be accepted, and residents must be prepared to unload their own debris on the site. So changing to a little bit more happier thing than floods and tree debris, fireworks in some areas of Sedgwick County went on sale last week, and the rest will be going on sale this week. Protect yourself and others from fire. Fires are injuries by following these safety fire tips from Sedgwick County Fire District 1.
Be fun, but also costly, causing thousands of fires and injuries each year. Sedgwick County Fire District 1 recommends these safety tips when shooting fireworks. Keep a water supply close by. Never throw fireworks at animals or people. And never attempt to relight a dung. Allow spent fireworks to cool before disposing of them in a metal container. For fireworks and noise complaints, call Sedgwick County's non-emergency line and have a safe holiday.
As mentioned, the 911 emergency lines need to stay open during this time period. So Sedgwick County is opening their non-emergency phone line from June 27th to July 6th. You can call 316-290-1011 from 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM for complaints or concerns about parties, excess noise, and fireworks. I do want to take this moment to add clarity on what is and isn't considered an emergency. A person, thing, or circumstance causing inconvenience or annoyance is a nuisance. Call the emergency line, 290-1011. Life-threatening situations are an emergency. Please call 911. Firework noise complaints, those are non-emergencies, and getting burned by said fireworks is an emergency. Last but not least, Sedgwick County offices will be closed Friday, July 4th in observance of Independence Day. As always, emergency services are available by calling or texting 911. And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Great updates. Really appreciate the announcements. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, saying that, Nicole, good job as usual.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda today, so we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of June 4th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, if you look at items A and B, all Commissioners were present at both of these meetings, so unless there's any objection, I'll combine both of these into one motion. Okay, saying no objection, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 4th and the regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, item C, accept the resignation of Alicia Whitaker from the Valley Center Township Treasurer position.
Mr. Radnor.
Thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. If it's okay with you, Chairman Commissioners, I'd propose to combine items C through K on your agenda. These involve a number of items, which include resignations from township positions and advisory boards, resolutions appointing individuals to various advisory boards. The suggestion would be to take the recommended actions on each of those items. You could do it all in one motion, just take recommended action on those items, C through K, and then allow the county clerk to swear in any appointees.
Okay, very good. Yeah, a couple thoughts here. Commissioners, if you have any comments you'd like to make on any of these appointments or resignations, C through K, you're welcome to do that. If you're being appointed and you're here today, Kelly Arnold, our county clerk, is here, so you can make your way right over here to the podium, and he'll get you sworn in and sign some paperwork and can make some comments. I would just say for those that are representing my appointments, Valley Center Township, there's two appointments that we're going to need to fill there, and there's an urgency there in the township because they got to pass some budgets, and they've got to pay some bills, and they need to have a quorum to do those things. So I'm working on that. I also want to thank Dean Iswanger. She's the Regional Director for DCF. She served in a capacity for me with the ADD Advisory Board, and just her capacity of work with DCF has taken it to where she cannot apply as much attention here. So I want to appreciate her service. And last but not least, I want to thank Stephanie Weens, who is here today, who's going to be joining my cab. Thank you so much. She's someone whose opinion I admire and appreciate greatly, so you're going to be a great service to our board. So thank you for coming on board there. Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think for the record, and those that do not have a copy of this, that at least the names and the positions are read into the record, either by the individual commissioner or by you as the chairman.
Okay. That's good.
If you want to do that.
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, Commissioner Meitzner, that's happy to do that. I'll just go through them and the item agendas that haven't already been read. Item D involves a resignation of Kendra Matic from the Valley Center Township trustee position. Item E is the resignation of Dean Iswanger, the chairman, mentioned from the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. F involved the resignation of Donald Garing, Jr., from the Commissioner Beatty Citizens' Advisory Board in District 4. Commissioner Beatty mentioned Stephanie Weens' appointment to that same board. Item H is the appointment of Curtis Epley to the Solid Waste Management Committee. Item I was a resolution appointing Tyler Mott to the same Solid Waste Management Committee in a different position. Item J is a resolution appointing Leonette Hodges to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. And the last item was a resolution reappointing Kristen Peterman to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate that, yeah. So if you are here today, Kelly Arnold will swear in, and then you're able to provide some comments. While you're doing that, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve and take the recommended actions for item C through K. Second. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Kelly.
If you'd like to step up here and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County 4th District Citizens Advisory Board so help me guide.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to state anything, you can.
I'm honored to be invited to this advisory board. I care deeply about the county, and I believe that showing up and getting involved is one of the most meaningful ways we can invest in the future. So thank you, Commissioner Beatty. I'm looking forward to serving on your board. I'm ready to listen, to learn, and lend a hand wherever I can, so thank you all so much.
Great, Stephanie. Thank you. Appreciate your willingness to serve.
All right. Next up, there we go. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board so help me guide.
I do.
Congratulations.
I would like to thank this board for giving me the opportunity to serve and to work with the community to help with juvenile justice.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, come on in. Ladies and gentlemen, both raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee so help me guide. Thank you. Okay. Guys, say it again. Thank you, guys.
Hey, thank you both for willingness to serve. Appreciate it. And everybody's willing to serve on all 30-plus boards we have here at the county. We're grateful. So thank you. Okay, moving on, on to new business. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item L, CON 2025-00060, conditional use request in the county to allow an accessory apartment on properties owned or rule residential district generally located on the west side of South Greenwich Road within one-half mile south of East 79th Street South.
Hey, Scott Wedle.
Good morning. So Scott Wedle from the Planning Department here to present this item. So as you heard, the applicant is requesting a conditional use in order to allow for an accessory apartment at this site, which is outlined in the turquoise color. This item is being heard today because the recommendations from the City of Derby Planning Commission and the MAPC, the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, are slightly different. They both are recommending approval, but there's a difference in the condition. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they would like to build a house on the property. The property is currently developed with a barn that includes a dwelling unit, so it's referred to as a barn dominium in the staff report. The requested conditional use would allow an accessory apartment so that the single-family house and the dwelling unit in the barn would both be permitted on the same property. In terms of the property, the site is generally located to the west of Greenwich and south of 79th Street. The site consists of one ownership parcel, is approximately 39 acres in size, zone rule residential, and currently developed with the barn, as you heard, with the dwelling unit. The property is within the City of Derby's urban area of influence, the City of Derby's urban growth area, and the Derby extraterritorial subdivision jurisdiction area. In terms of context, properties to the north, south, and east are zone rule residential in unincorporated Sedgwick County. Properties to the north and east are developed with single-family dwellings and in some agricultural uses. Property to the south is in agricultural use, and property to the west is owned PUD, planned unit development, in the city of Derby and is developed as a subdivision with single-family homes. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about use definitions and supplementary use regulations, which are found in the Unified Zoning Code. In terms of review, on May 1st, the Derby Planning Commission considered the application and voted to recommend approval. Their vote was nine to zero. The recommendation included waiving the supplementary use regulation that requires the appearance of an accessory apartment to be compatible with the main dwelling unit and the character of the neighborhood. So that would allow some more design freedom for the applicant. And on May 8th, the MAPC considered the application. The MAPC recommended approval, and that was a vote of 11 to zero. And the MAPC, though, did not recommend waiving the supplementary use regulation. No member of the public spoke in favor or opposition to the request at that meeting. So essentially, you have two recommendations coming to you, both for approval. The only difference is just whether or not to apply that condition that would require the design compatibility. No protests were received for this case. Therefore, you can approve the recommendation from the MAPC with a simple majority. And just a quick note that the cab for District 5 does not hear zoning cases. In terms of recommended actions, it's recommended the county commission adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the conditional use request, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published, again, requiring three out of five votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the MAPC recommendation, adopt the findings of the Derby Planning Commission, and approve the conditional use permit with the waiver of the supplementary use regulation requiring the design considerations. That would require four out of five votes because it's an override. Likewise, you also have the option to override the MAPC, make alternative findings, and deny the application, again, would require four out of five votes. With that, I'll take you through some of the graphics here. So obviously, here's the aerial showing the site. Here's the zoning map, again, showing rural residential and then the area of Derby to the west. This is the map from the comprehensive plan showing the urban growth area for Derby. Here's the map from the zoning code, Unified Zoning Code, showing the urban area of influence and the city of Derby's area extends into this area. This is the map showing the protest and the notification area. Again, no protests were submitted. Here is a graphic that was submitted by the applicant. It's a draft site plan showing the barn dominium to the south and west, and then the single-family home proposed to the north. Excuse me. And here's another graphic that was supplied that shows the layout of the house. Here are photos of the site and the surrounding location. Let's kind of move through those kind of quickly.
Ready.
And so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Before we get rolling, I want to give Commissioners an opportunity to disclose of any expertise communication they have had with anyone on this case. We'll start with Commissioner Bluebaugh.
I've not had any expertise communication, and I have not had any expertise communication.
I, like colleagues, have had zero expertise communication. I remain open-minded on the facts of the case.
I have not had any expertise communication either.
I've also had none, and I guess I have a question also, that, does this require a public hearing today?
I would defer to legal on that one, but typically, they do.
Commissioner Howe, Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I would just say that statutorily, there's no required public hearing, but the common practice, the board has been to have a public hearing. I think it's probably advisable to do so today on this item.
I have a few questions, and, but I guess I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public before I make much comment here.
Sure. We'll come back to you that way, Scott. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hang tight. Why don't we officially open up a public hearing that we can hear from the public? Is the applicant here? Do we have the applicant here?
I'm not aware that they are, sir. I'm looking in the audience. I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so we've officially opened a public hearing on item L and new business. Then we'd invite anyone to come up and share. I know there were no protests on the specific rezoning request, so anybody from the public would like to address the commission on item L? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple questions for planning. So again, are we calling this an accessory apartment?
Yes, yes, sir. And the reason why is because in order to have the two dwelling units and the way that they're trying to put them on the property, that most fits accessory apartment is the definition.[1604.82]
I, like colleagues, have had zero expertise communication. I remain open-minded on the facts of the case.
I have not had any expertise communication either.
I've also had none, and I guess I have a question also that, does this require a public hearing today?
I would defer to legal on that one, but typically they do.
Commissioner Hal Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I would just say that statutorily, there's no required public hearing, but the common practice the board has been to have a public hearing, I think it's probably advisable to do so today on this item.
I have a few questions, but I guess I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public before I make much comment here.
We'll come back to you that way, Scott. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hang tight. Why don't we officially open up a public hearing that we can hear from the public? Is the applicant here? Do we have the applicant here?
I'm not aware that they are, sir. And I'm looking in the audience. I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so we've officially opened a public hearing on Item L and new business. And we'd invite anyone to come up and share. I know there were no protests on the specific rezoning request, so. Anybody from the public like to address the commission on Item L? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioner How.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions for planning. So, again, are we calling this an accessory apartment?
Yes, yes, sir. And the reason why is because in order to have the two dwelling units and the way that they're trying to put them on the property that most fits, accessory apartment is the definition.
How many square feet is the existing structure that's already there?
I do not have that information readily available, sir.
I'm just going to... It's a fairly large building, but it... I guess I don't know what the size is. The drawing that you showed here, what exactly is this? Is this all new construction, or is this... Some of this existing?
My understanding, so there are two graphics. So there's this one that has the site layout, and here's the existing barn dominium down here. This would be the new proposed home, which is also shown in this graphic as well. So my understanding is that all of this would be new construction.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, I guess it's anecdotally, it sounds like, just kind of the way that it's drawn right there, I would say they're roughly the same square footage, roughly. I just, maybe I'm off a little bit, but it doesn't appear that this is a small building necessarily. I guess a couple of questions here. The regulation that the M A P C's latched on to talking about needs to be... Has to have a similar look. Can you please explain what that means exactly?
Yes, sir. I think it's actually subject to interpretation, but it requires that the appearance of an accessory apartment be compatible with the main dwelling unit and the character of the neighborhood. And I think what that's intended to do is to make sure that this is not something that stands out in a significant way. And so that it is, again, compatible, and that compatibility is subject to interpretation.
So if the original structure wasn't there, there would be no argument that this is not a compatible building with... I mean, if this was a standalone building, it wasn't already a structure on the site, there would be no argument really to make in this case?
Yes, sir. I believe that that's a correct interpretation.
I'll just share with my colleagues here that I'm familiar with the area, and again, I've not spoken with anybody involved in this case at all. But I'm familiar with the area, and there's a lot of really unique housing, you know, very large, very high on the... The price value of those homes in the area that are quite high. This is a very beautiful area for what they're putting on here. It's very, very high-end. I'd say it's not going to be, you know, done poorly. This is very upscale, if you will. And again, the existing structure, I think, is quite beautiful, and what they're planning here, based on this drawing, looks to me extremely, extremely large and kind of, I'll just say, is kind of a high-end structure for residents. And so I don't think it's going to be ugly. And I'll just say this, that looking around the area, there are some unique buildings around there, but they're all very beautiful in their own way. The architecture is varied, if you will. And just to the west of this is our new Cedar Ranch community, and if you drive through there, those homes are all extremely unique, very interesting architecture, beautiful homes, very expensive homes. Some of them are well over a million dollars, I'm sure. So I guess I don't have a concern about this. I think that the regulation that would cause us to pause, in this case, actually doesn't make any sense at all. I think that these people ought to have some latitude and freedom to move forward. I don't have any concerns that this is going to be something that's going to detract, if you will, from the beautification of this neighborhood. This is going to be a beautiful site, so I'm sorry that we even have to spend as much time talking about this. Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to make a motion to... I'll be glad to make a motion. If there's no other questions, just let me know. I'll be ready to go here.
Commissioners, any questions to Scott on this case? I would just say that I've asked Scott and his department, I know J R is here, to actually look at accessory dwelling units, A D Us, by right in the county with some sort of guidance on what that looks like. But I do think that some of these should be done by right, particularly where there's infill opportunity and housing needs. I think that this is something that will be coming to the commission here before long, some recommendations on my request, so. Looking forward to that. Okay, Commissioner How, thank you. You can make a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we would approve the conditional use following Derby's Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Scott, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, Extension Center Update.
Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, County Manager's Office. Periodically, we like to have our friends from the Cedric County Extension Center come talk to us about the important informational, educational activities they've got going on at 21st and Ridge and out in the community. And so at this point, I'd like to introduce and invite Dr. Jennifer Brantley to come down and talk a little bit about what's going on.
Okay. Always good to have Dr. Brantley with us. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. And I just wanted to say real quick that Extension is working on this stuff. We just finished a very busy spring. Of course, harvest is happening right now. We've had a couple TV stations coming out and interviewing our ag agent with the wheat harvests going on. We continue to do some connections with the Healthy Corner Store Initiative and blood pressure issues. We are preparing for a little thing called the Cedric County Fair with our 4-H groups. We have Stephanie Hayes, our agent here, being a cheerleader for us today. And so we are gearing up for the fair and showcasing all of the work that the youth do. But today, I would like to introduce two of my colleagues, Abby Drought and Matthew McKernan. Originally, we were going to talk about, you know, specifically drought issues, but they're going to pivot a little bit, and I'll just hand it over to them. They've come off a busy spring of garden tours and helping people to prepare for the summer in gardening and landscaping. But they have also been working with the city on the drought issues as well. And so I'm going to hand it over to them and have them share their expertise with you all.
Very good. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Abby Drought, and I'm a food crops horticulture agent with Cedric County Research and Extension. And yes, this is the year everyone learns how to say my last name, because we are doing nothing but talking about the drought.
Yeah.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Matthew McKernan, and I'm the ornamental horticulture agent for the Cedric County Extension Office. And so my role is to primarily teach the community about landscaping, turf grass, and ornamental plant care. As was mentioned today, we came to talk with you a month ago when we made our request to talk about not only tips for managing drought conditions, but also to update you on some of our work. And if we would have known that making that request a month ago would have brought so much rain, we would have been here much sooner. But that's okay. We still would like to take this opportunity to talk about the work that we've been doing since March of 2024, as our horticulture programs have met and planned with the City of Wichita regarding not only water restrictions, but the implementation, education of the Cedric County community. In the past 15 months, we've partnered with various organizations to provide public education related to water conservation and drought preparedness. Whether that's directly educating community members on strategies for water conservation or partnering with local organizations to offer community events, our services have been sought out by residents across Cedric County for the past 15 months. And we'd like to give you a brief overview of some of those services in the past 15 months. We've done a wide variety of public presentations, including 15 different presentations to large community groups, including the City of Wichita City Council meetings, going over to H O A Management Services and speaking with their staff, doing public presentations at senior centers, public libraries, and with civic organizations such as the Optimist Club. We've also been working with the Cedric County Conservation District and community garden clubs as well. As you often see, we are on TV and other media appearances throughout the year as well. Over the past 15, or excuse me, over the past 12 months, we've done 30 media interviews related to water conservation and tips for drought preparedness. That includes 12 weekly episodes of My Learning with McKernan on K W C H over the noon hour, as well as 14 primetime evening television slots talking about drought preparedness and water conservation, and four newspaper article interviews as well. We've also worked with major organizations in the community, such as Wichita Area Builders Association. We partnered with them at their WABA Home Show this spring to have a booth that not only provided information about drought-tolerant plants for the south-central community, but we also provided 14 seminars throughout the home show to be able to talk to the community about how they can adjust their landscape and gardening practices to conserve water. We've also provided a wide variety of tours of our Cedric County Arboretum and grounds that surround our office as well. Tour groups included public schools, private businesses, and organizations looking to promote water conservation. We really utilize and showcase our grounds to show not only drought-tolerant plants, but the best watering practices and best care that our plants can preserve, or our best practices for plant care in our area. We really want to be able to showcase to the community what a healthy garden could look like with both minimal water and minimal maintenance. We've also done a wide variety of different newsletter articles and social media posts to try to also educate the community. I want to share with you all, if you don't mind me approaching, one of our resources that we have been sharing with the community, and I'll let my colleague here talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Ben. We've worked really hard this past year to support and educate the horticulture industry here in Cedric County. It's actually the number-one agricultural industry employer in our area, providing over 2,230 jobs and contributing more than 204 million a year to the local economy. That's based off of the 2024 Kansas Agricultural Economic Impact Report. To help this industry navigate tough times like drought conditions and water restrictions, we've hosted a number of continuing education and certification training courses. In the past year alone, we've trained over 500 individuals, including garden center employees, landscape professionals, arborists, lawn and landscape companies, local food producers, and many other horticultural businesses across the region. On top of that, we've held roundtable discussions with local horticulture companies to hear directly from them and what their biggest challenges are underwater restrictions and how our educational efforts can help them. These conversations help us find a way to not only support these businesses, but also improve the overall quality of life in our community. Other efforts we've been making, making information easily accessible to the public is also a big priority for us. We've partnered with the City of Wichita to contribute videos, educational resources, and water-saving messages to their Save Wichita Water website. The site is a great go-to for learning how to conserve water for your landscape and keeping up with current drought conditions and understanding the city's drought plan. In addition to that, we created our own set of drought and water conservation resources on our Cedric County Extension website at cedriccounty.ksu.edu/drought, D R O U G H T. The site expands on what's already available through the city and includes even more resources and practical tips. Things like how much water your plants really need, how to measure what you're applying, the most efficient waste of water. And all of this is there to help community make informed and water-wise choices. Other resources, we've worked to bring expertise from across the Kansas State University system to serve the needs of our community during this ongoing drought. A great example is the K-State Garden Hour webinar series. It's free. It happens on the first Wednesday of every month, and it's been incredibly popular with over 5,700 people registered, with more than a third of those right here in Cedric County. These webinars cover timely and practical topics led by experts and specialists. Some recent sessions included understanding water sources in your garden, maximizing water efficiency through drip irrigation, heat-loving perennials for Kansas, native and ornamental grasses, and increasing vegetable yields during drought. We'd love to invite you and the whole community to join us for the next one. It's happening Wednesday, July 2nd, from noon to 1 P. M. We'll be presenting on cutting-edge efforts in Kansas demonstration gardens and showcasing some of the great things happening right here at the Cedric County Extension Office grounds. And if you can't make it live, that's not a problem. All of the webinars are recorded and available online at cedric.ksu.edu/events. And lastly, as you can probably tell, we've partnered with a wide variety of businesses and organizations across Cedric County over the past year. Whether it's providing training to employees, supporting teachers, or directly teaching students, we're committed to sharing research-based information that people can trust. These partnerships are helping individuals, businesses, and organizations thrive, and they're playing an important role in improving the overall quality of life in our community.
Not only is, as we as Extension staff have been working hard to educate the community about drought, we've also really tried to leverage the efforts of our Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program as well. Currently, we have 350 Master Gardener volunteers who serve the Cedric County community, and they have helped with special events, garden tours, speakers bureau presentations, answering questions on our garden hotline, and other educational booths out at community events to really help continue to maximize and extend the outreach and education into our community. Want to highlight a few of the great accomplishments of our Master Gardener Program this past year. In 2024 alone, our volunteers recorded over 28,500 hours of volunteer service. In comparison, that's an equivalent of 13.7 full-time staff through volunteer service. As a dollar value, that's $954,900 in community service and an equivalent of 115% return of what the dollar value that you provide to Extension back into the community just through our Master Gardener volunteers. Last year, our Master Gardeners were able to provide research-based information with over 97,750 community members throughout Cedric County, or approximately one in every five resident. This year, they've hosted many great events, including our Design and Grow Gardening Workshop. This year, we focused in March of 2025 with our Design and Grow Workshop focusing on water conservation and drought. We hosted presentations such as drought-tolerant gardens using native plants, food gardening in the drought, and new varieties of annuals and perennials. We had over 300 people attend that event. And from the surveys, 93% of participants reported planning to change their gardening practices to improve their water conservation and their garden and landscape this year. Next, in May, we held our Spring Garden Fair. This is a family-friendly event that really focuses on hands-on education. And so at this event, we focused on the theme of water, every drop counts. We had a wide variety of interactive educational booths, tours of our grounds, and rain gauge and seed giveaways, as well as community booths to bring drought resources out into the community as well. Participants learned about everything from the journey of water through earth. They learned more about the earth's water supply, the importance of tracking water use, and water-wise gardening techniques. Through this and other events, we reached over 2,254 people at this event. The Master Gardeners, as you can see, have been very busy this year. And although we're only halfway through the year, so far, Extension Master Gardeners have reported over 15,582 hours of volunteer service in the Cedric County community. One of the accomplishments that I'd like to take just one more minute to talk about is a very recent notification and accolade that our Extension Master Gardener Program has been awarded, and several of the Master Gardeners in attendance today are a huge part of. This past week, we were notified by the Extension Master, that our Extension Master Gardener Program here in Cedric County has been awarded an international recognition. Our program has been selected to receive the 2025 David Gibby International Master Gardener Search for Excellent Award. We were awarded first place in the Youth Programs Division for our program that we developed called How Trees Drink, Breathe, and Grow. This program is youth-focused and teaches kids through hands-on activities not only the importance of trees and their importance in the environment, but also how a tree functions and how we as community members can implement best care practices for the trees that we have here in south-central Kansas. With this activity, students receive a little tree cookie or a slice of a tree trunk that they're able to take to each one of these lessons to learn how trees drink, breathe, and grow. This lesson has been presented to over 3,000 kids in the last year and a half, not only at events of the Cedric County Zoo, but also online through the USDA 259 YouTube channel for educational lessons. It was implemented originally for the Engineering Expo, hosted by the Society of Women Engineers, and we've done this at many other events, including the Wichita Public Library. To just give you a little bit of background about this award, the David Gibby International Master Gardener Search for Excellent Award is presented this August at our International Master Gardener Conference. This award celebrates the outstanding programs of Extension Master Gardener volunteers throughout all of the United States, Canada, and South Korea. The international award is named in honor of Dr. David Gibby, who was the founder of the very first Master Gardener Program in Seattle, Washington in 1973. At that time, much like today, the Master Gardener Program was started to assist county staff with the increasing demand for research-based information out in the community. In 1973, the Master Gardener Program began, and since that time, over 96,000 Master Gardener volunteers have been trained worldwide. As I mentioned earlier, currently, 350 Extension Master Gardener volunteers serve the Cedric County community. But since our Master Gardener Program started, we've trained over 957 volunteers since 1987. We really have an incredible Master Gardener group, and we want to thank them for their time and effort in the community. For those who may be interested in the Master Gardener Program, fall is the time of year when we begin focusing our attention on bringing in and training new Extension Master Gardener volunteers. And so we're now seeking new applicants for the upcoming fall training. Anyone in the community who has a passion for gardening, enjoys learning and sharing their knowledge, and is excited about volunteering in the community is encouraged to apply. New volunteer trainings will happen this fall with, from 14 weeks, beginning September 4th through December 4th. And anyone interested in applying is welcome to join our informational meeting. That'll be held at the Cedric County Extension Center in 4-H Hall on Thursday, July 17th, from 2:00 to 4:00 P. M. The meeting will not only outline the requirements and benefits of the program, but current Extension Master Gardener volunteers will be on hand to share their experiences and discuss volunteer opportunities within the community.
We've been busy. We're tired.
Yeah.
I do want to, so I know that she, earlier, said that we got 10.2 inches in the last month of rain, which is amazing. But doesn't it, in the horticulture industry, know that that won't last forever? So we kind of want to leave you guys with a few tips on, for y'all and also for the community members, on water conservation, what they can still do, even though we're very lush right now with water. While the recent rainfall has been a welcome relief for our area, it's important to remember that drought conditions haven't been completely resolved, and our community needs to improve water conservation remains as important as ever. Even though the city's current water restrictions are based on a 12-month rolling average, our efforts to use water more efficiently will need to continue well beyond that timeline. So we'd like to leave you and your constituents with a few simple reminders on how everyone can help conserve our most valuable resource, water. First, know when to water. Before you turn on that hose or sprinkler, test your soil's moisture, check plants for signs of stress, it's much better to water based on an actual need rather than on a routine schedule. My favorite thing to tell people is just to turn off the rain bird. Second, measure your water, measure the water you're applying. Use a rain gauge or container to catch both rainfall and irrigation water so you can monitor how much your plants are getting and whether you've met your watering goals for the week. Third, maximize your impact by watering slowly, deeply, and infrequently. It's actually beneficial to allow short dry periods between waterings to help develop a deeper root system and which will also be more resilient. And finally, a few small landscape changes can go a really long way. Things like raising your mowing heights, applying moisture to retain moisture, pulling weeds that compete for water... weeds that compete for water, and choosing drought-tolerant plants. These small shifts can make a big difference in overall water savings. And that kind of concludes what we're going to say about the Master Gardener program and horticulture, but we also wanted to highlight some other programs in our office. Although we do a lot of work, so do our peers. Other exciting things happening, coming up July 9th through the 12th, we'll be celebrating the Cedric County Fair in Cheney, Kansas. This year's fair is especially exciting with over 300 new 4-H projects entered and 40 new 4-H participants joining in the fun. It's a wonderful showcase of local talent growth and youth development in our community. On the health side, our Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas program, known as SHIC, has already made a big impact in 2025. So far this year, our SHIC counselors have helped Cedric County residents save more than $291,000 through Medicare, education, and guidance. We've served over 200 individuals and logged over 89 volunteer hours in May alone. We're also proud to be partnering with the WSU Community Engagement Institution on the Healthy Corner Store Initiative. This program is working to increase access to affordable, fresh, and culturally relevant foods right here in Wichita neighborhoods. Through this partnership, we're offering direct education to both store owners and their customers, empowering informed choices that improve individual health and strength and strengthen the well-being of our entire community. So we invite you and everyone listening to stop by our Extension office, explore our website, or join us at any of our community events we host throughout the year. There's something for everyone, and we'd love to connect with you.
Agreed.
Thank you for your time, and we'll take questions.
Okay. Abby, Matt, thank you.
Dr. Brantley, thank you. I do have a couple of questions and a comment. Just the question side, they can be really brief. The water conservation discussion is a statewide discussion, not just local.
True.
Now's the time to continue to act on this while we do have a plethora of water right now. The state's doing a lot of committee work and special committee work. Is the Extension from across the state, are they involved in those discussions with the state of Kansas?
They are, yes. We have a water institute at Kansas State University that's involved across the state, not only doing research, but also trying to work with.
Just want to make sure your expertise is in that room. And the next question is, do you have any relationship with WABA in advising on some of these, Wichita Area Builders Association, and advising on some of the natural grasses and things that are, the developers is what I'm talking about, and is there an opportunity to maybe advise them on what some potential development with natural grasses could be to reduce the need for watering? Do you have a relationship with them?
That is a relationship that I would say we've been building a lot more this past 12 to 13 months.
Great.
We've really reached out with WABA not only through the home show to make sure we're providing education, but trying to make other resources available and make sure that their builders and the homeowners that select their houses know what resources are available to assist them.
Last question. Any harvests going on right now? Any indication of even having a successful harvest for the farmers, or what are you hearing?
You know, my program area is not in the weed area, so I don't want to mislead you with any information on that.
Well, you're famous. We see you on TV all the time, so.
You'll have to learn with Jeff on that one to be able to get that.
Okay, last comment. Dr. Brantley, we have a new aging director starting here in a couple of weeks here at Cedric County. What you do in SHIC is really valuable. I hope that you could meet him and visit with him and see how we can collaborate really well between our aging services and department with SHIC and what you guys do with SHIC, so we can make sure we're streamlining some of that and offering the best support to the community. So I think he's starting next week or in a couple of weeks, next week, so.
He's here.
Yeah, if you can organize that, that'd be helpful. Commissioner Howe?
And if I may, just if you have other connections in the community, including contacts at WABA that you'd like us to work with to better educate the community, we would welcome your way.
Coming your way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate that. I agree that the SHIC program has actually been really good for Cedric County, and I'm glad to see that that is continuing to thrive, if you will. On the watering restrictions, I just have a couple of basic questions here. So what specifically is restricted? Is it just lawn landscaping-type watering, or is it, for example, say someone has a backyard, you know, say a horse tank swimming pool, can they fill that up? Can they bathe the dog? What kind of things are restricted in terms of that restriction?
Yeah. So the city of Wichita is the one that creates the water restrictions for the water that comes from the city of Wichita. I believe the understanding, or my understanding of it, is that any outdoor water use for the landscape is what's being primarily restricted. So things like dog bowls or water sources for pets are not necessarily included in that. The primary concern is the lawn and the landscape. There are exemptions within their regulations, and that includes exemptions for food crop gardens as well, and each particular stage of water restriction has different rules and exemptions. Like I said, we're currently in drought stage two, which is what limits the outdoor water use on the lawn and landscape, but if we were to have moved into drought stage three, it gets a lot more restrictive, including all outdoor water use.
Does Wichita's restriction extend out to their customers like Bel Air and Derby?
Yes. So anybody who uses municipal water through the city of Wichita, including some of their subsidiaries, is being asked to conserve water in the same way as the city of Wichita.
Specifically for swimming pools, are they restricted? I mean, can you fill them on the day that you're allowed to use water and not fill them on other days? Or are they not, what about swimming pools specifically?
I can answer that. I was at a, when we did the HOA management meeting, that was a question that came up, and Gary Jansen was there from the city, and he said, preferably if you could fill them on the day that you are in the zone to fill, that would be great, but they would have a really hard time restricting that. So preferably if you can fill them, if say you're meant to fill, your water day is Monday, if you can try to fill your pool that day, that'd be great. But as far as public pools and HOA pools, things like that, they'd rather not restrict those because they don't want people to be miserable.
So if they receive a fine from the city of Wichita or from the municipality that's against policing this, and it's a HOA pool, and it's received a fine because they fill their pool on a day that wasn't supposed to be their day, so to speak, is that something that should be, I guess, is that debatable, that that is an appropriate fine, I guess?
I think that would be a better question for the city.
Yeah. Well, I guess this is happening, and that's why I'm wondering how to interpret this. I understand watering the lawn is really, and again, some people, if there was no restriction, they would like to water every day, maybe they overwater. And so I guess the idea that you have, you know, regular watering, it seems to be almost excessive, and it's every day, this restriction makes sense for that. But when you do something, let's say, filling a pool, it happens once, then you just top it off every once in a while, that doesn't seem to make as much sense to me. All right, well, thank you for the answers. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. We appreciate all the work being done on Extension. Congratulations to the Master Gardeners. Thank you to all the volunteers. We're grateful for all the work you do, so. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file this presentation.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, a resolution appointing an interim county appraiser.
Okay. Sheena, welcome.
Good morning. Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. The resolution in front of you today states that the current county appraiser, Mark Clark, will not be reappointed to a new term, as he has indicated he has plans to retire from Cedric County. Brent Shelton, our current deputy CFO, will be appointed interim county appraiser effective July 1st, 2025, for a period of six months while the county conducts a national search. Staff recommends approval of this resolution and will stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? I would just make a comment for our county appraiser, Mark Clark, who's 30-plus years of service here at Cedric County. He does a wonderful job. He's a clear communicator to us. He always picks up the phone when we have questions. He's got a very difficult job, running a very complex department, so I think we'll have an opportunity to really celebrate Mark and sure appreciate him, Mark, at a later time, but at this point in time, I just want to make sure that he hears from the commission that we appreciate his service and hope him and wish him a wonderful retirement, 30-plus years, so. That's how Brent Shelton coming in, is he interimmed until we can get a new appraiser appointed? So interesting times at the appraiser's office. We're excited to help support all that's needed to make sure that we have the greatest evaluation process here in the community, so. Okay, Commissioners, any questions on this interim county appraiser? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution appointing an interim county appraiser.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, reconsideration of item two of the minutes of the March 6, 2025, meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, HHW AV Upgrades, Household Hazardous Waste.
Hey, there's Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, purchasing director. This item was originally brought to you on March 12th, and at that time, it was the will of the commission to have this item returned for review and possible revision, and that has been conducted, both the review and the recommended revision, and I'd like to read to you at this time that new recommendation. It is to utilize the interlocal purchasing system, TIPS Contract 230901 with Conference Technologies Incorporated, also known as CTI, and this new amount will be in the dollar amount of $16,938.60. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, or staff is available as well, but recommend approval.
Okay, thank you for the work being done on this, Joe, and your team. Appreciate everybody's work. Susan, everyone. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? Ms. Schurhau?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you for the reconsideration. I think this is, I think this is much more appropriate for the use of this building and how I think it should be used, but is there any detail exactly what the nearly $17,000 is going to do? Is there a list of that?
I'll let Mr. Andrew Dilts, our Director of Facilities, provide you details.
Hey, Andrew.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Andrew Dilts, Director of Facilities. Basically, at a high level, this will allow a couple residential-style displays to be mounted in the facility, as well as a soundbar and a mounted video camera in the conference room so they can have remote meetings from this facility. There's also approximately $3,000 that we'll have with Cedric County IT to purchase a computer to run that camera and some of the other software.
All right. Thank you. That's all I need.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, again, thanks for all the work here. I'll make a motion to approve the reconsideration of item two of the minutes of the March 6, 2025 bid board.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Okay, Joe, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item P, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on June 18th, 2025.
For the record, again, Joe Thomas, purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that was held on June 18th, we have five items that we're presenting to you for your approval. Our first item is the change order number three for A&E Services for the Calm Care Crisis Center. This recommendation is to accept the change order from Helix Architecture and Design LLC, doing business as Helix Architecture and Design, in the amount of $14,500. Our second item is the door control PC upgrade for juvenile detention facility under the Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept a quote from Cornerstone Incorporated in the amount of $97,175. Item number three, Lexus Plus AI Online Products and Subscriptions for County Counselor's Office. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Lexus Nexus, and it's for a period of three years. That period will start August 1st of this year and will go through July 31st of 2028, and will be in a total amount of $64,248. Item number four is the dead animal removal for animal control. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Anderson Wildlife Solutions LLC at that rate listed, and this will cover a period of one year with four one-year options to renew. And our final item, item five, is the AT&amp;T contract, 911 phone lines, emergency communications, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from AT&amp;T Incorporated, and it's in the amount of $120,597.84 and covers a period of 36 months. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. Recommend approval.
Okay, very, very good. I would just, one quick comment, and then turn it open to questions. Item four, the dead animal removal from animal control, that has, we have not had a contract for the last, I believe, year. I want to publicly thank Public Works, who many times we've called when there's been a situation, and since we hadn't had a contract in place, they've gone out and helped me in multiple situations in my district, so I really appreciate the work of Public Works to fill that gap for us, so thank you, Lynn. Okay, questions? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really just wanted to, I guess, comment on the same item. 92 vendors that got a, it looks like just about seven different bids, I guess. Is this the same company that's done this in the past?
No, it is not.
What's the price per animal in the past that we've paid?
I believe the last one was in the mid-100 mark.
Okay, so this is going to be an increase in cost?
Yes, it is.
Because I was just doing some, I mean, simple math here, but it looks to me like at this rate, we only removed six animals in 2024 and 10 animals in 2025, which I would think is kind of a low number. So I don't know what the actual number was, but if it's mid-100, I guess, that would mean that we probably did around, say, 20 animals.
Twenty-four.
So anyway, I guess I'd like to know what the estimate would be, but, and again, another question I would have is, do they do this for like larger animals or is this for any animal?
This is basically any animal, large or small. They did not stipulate any restrictions on the type of carcass they would pick up.
Things like opossums, raccoons, snakes, skunks?
As long as it was initiated by a request, yes.
I guess on some animals, like a large deer, I see that, especially if it's on a highway, that's difficult and heavy and can be extremely, I mean, extremely difficult. But if it's a snake or something like that, I guess I just say, some of these, that price is very reasonable, and other animals, it may not be the right number. So I'm just wondering, was there any effort to try to tailor this for the amount of work that each one of these would take?
Commissioners, Tim Coffin, Deputy County Manager, this contract will augment and supplement the work that animal control staff do. So those small animals that you've described, snakes, rodents, that sort of thing, our staff will handle that. This contract is for things, large things like deer that are significant, that may put our staff at risk because we don't have the equipment to lift large animals like that.
That's what I was wanting to hear here, but, by the way, I think this is the first time I remember seeing this come up in bid boards. I don't know how we've handled this in the past. You said we didn't have a contract for a year, but if we've voted on this in the past, I completely lost that memory, I guess, but.
I believe because of the size of it, it was not brought before bid board B-O-C-C.
Okay.
So we just did this out of, we felt formal reasons.
All right, well, appreciate, again, this is some subject matter that's kind of interesting that we don't get to talk about very often, so glad to know there's a plan, and this is how you get rid of deer. Now, I guess one of the questions, if this is inside of a city, we don't do it inside of a city, this is only for our area of responsibility along our roads, I assume?
Commissioner, that's correct. We would follow the service area that we, it depends on the city and what level of service contract we have with them, but it would be available for the areas where Cedric County.
What about townships and other things like that? Do we still do it there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Don't hear about it a lot, because those of us in the country just handle our own business, right, Tom? Okay, five items on the bid board. I'd make a motion to approve the bid board and contracts regular meeting on June 18th, 2025.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Tom, would it be okay if we pause and go to fire while we have it? Okay. We're going to take, put a pause on the Board of County Commission meetings, and I'm going to call to order the governing body to fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for the public agenda for the fire district? Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes.
Okay, looking at item A, all Commissioners were present, so I'll make a motion, unless there's any questions or comments on the fire meeting minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the fire meeting minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
A motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Next item, please.
New business, item B, establish budget authority in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents, and the Fire District Special Equipment Fund.
Okay. We were going to have Chief Kevin Nelson give that presentation, but I think we get the, the big chief, the top chief instead. The chief of chiefs.
Sounds like a tablet, the big chief.
Chief Williams, thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. The four hundred ninety-seven thousand out of our special equipment fund is to buy all new protective clothing, firefighting bunker gear, protective clothing for all of our staff. We pushed this through because they found our older style gear has the PAFS, PAFAS, cancer-causing agent in the gear, and so we, we've historically bought X number of sets every year in a contract, and we decided this time that we didn't feel right just buying fifteen sets and having another hundred and twenty-five firefighters that weren't in the clean gear. So, we had equipment fund money, special equipment fund, we worked with finance to use that money to go ahead and make a full purchase at this time.
Okay. Very good. This is a big deal, an important deal. We want to show our firefighters that we certainly care about their gear and the safety of their gear. Lindsey, you, finance gives a thumb up on using the, the special equipment fund, so this has been through the vetted process. Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Meitzner?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, Chief. I know we had a gender review, and this was going to be on consent, but I just, we thought, Rachel Howell, and I thought that it was worth having on new business so we could, you could explain this further for the, for not us, but for the public, so, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're on item B. I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of budget authority in the Fire District Special Equipment Fund in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
A motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Next item, please.
Item C, establish budget authority in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, and the Fire District Special Equipment Fund.
Okay, Chief.
This amount of money that we're transferring is for what we call dual-certified wildland extrication gear. One thing to remember is, we've had three firefighters that we've lost have been on wildland fires, and that's kind of a, kind of an oddity for a department that's primarily a suburban department. But the wildland gear is lightweight gear, it's certified for them to fight grass fires, wheat field fires, and those type of fires in. It's a, it's a lightweight gear, it's a lot less cumbersome, and it's certified, and we want to put our people in that to get them out of the hot structural gear on these wildland fires. The second piece of this is, it's dual extrication certified, so that on car wrecks and, you know, any type of rescue event, they can also wear this gear. I really like it on a car wreck because what we don't think about, you take a hundred-degree day, and these guys are out on a blacktop four-lane highway when it's a hundred and ten at two in the afternoon for forty-five minutes working, that's a, that's a tough deal in full firefighter structure gear, and this, this gear puts them in lightweight gear and a lot cooler. And the other piece of this is, the structural, these, the lightweight gear is about a thousand dollars a set, the structural gear is about four thousand a set. So, any time that we can take our guys out of the heavy gear and put them in the light gear, we're also extending the life of the expensive gear. So, that was an ulterior cost savings money for us, too.
That's good.
So, that's the reason we, we got, we applied for a grant last year, and out of this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand is to a federal grant, so we're responsible for the remaining piece of that.
Okay. Very good. Finance gives a thumb up. Appreciate the opportunity to use the special equipment fund, that's what that fund is designed for, and we certainly want to show support to our firefighters. Appreciate the explanation and the reasons why this is important for your, for your careers, so. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, is the, the previous item had a hundred and forty units, quantity was a hundred and forty, the quantity on this is a hundred and forty-eight. Why do we need eight more of this one?
Because we are, they don't think I deserve for a structural gear anymore, but to show up on a scene, I have to wear some type of flash protection gear. So, we, the grant we applied for was for the hundred and, the same, you know, for the twenty-four-hour people, but we made a decision that our mechanics and some, and our, some of our investigators and chief like myself, when I show up on a gear, I don't need, on a scene, I don't need four thousand dollar gear, I can wear one thousand dollar gear and meet NFPA requirements as long as I don't enter the structure.
Okay.
So, that was actually, we added that to, as a cost savings, to not buy bunker gear for everybody.
All right, thank you.
It's great insight, Chief. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay. I'll make a motion on item C to approve the establishment of budget authority in the Fire District Special Equipment Fund in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Chief, thanks. Gladly supported. Appreciate you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Stolz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items D, E, and F on the fire agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, we've been briefed on consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through F.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the fire district? Okay, seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
We have no executive session for the fire district, so I'll officially adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and bring us back to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stolz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items Q through double-letter AG this morning.
Okay, Commissioners, we've been briefed on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items Q through AG.
Second.
A motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Okay, do we have anything under budget discussion? We do not have anything under budget discussion, so could you allow, Tom, when is the recommended budget, when is your recommended, July?
July ninth.
July ninth, so we're moving, thank you, Lindsey, we're moving down the track towards recommended budget, so nothing officially from the finance department or budget department, is there anything from the commission on budget discussion? We kind of have a process here where we like to have conversations publicly so that we can give staff plenty of time to prepare data and information, so is there anything any of the commission would like to discuss here? Commissioner Meitzner?
Well, I think it's helpful as we take these steps, now we're trying to get the, the actual numbers of, of the assessed value impact, and it allows us to individually and then eventually collectively decide how much of that assessed value we do want to capture and how much we may not want to, and apply that towards a mill levy reduction as we've done in a couple of past years. So, thank you for the Appraiser's Office, the finance, for, for getting that information more confirmed as we get closer to the, to the stage. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman, and as we talk through the budget, I, I don't want to be out of scope, but I want to have a little bit of a conversation about this assessment process and the values they've came up with, reading a lot of the comments online. Councilmember Glasscock put some comments out there, seen a lot of the people really questioning the assessments and how they're going up, and I know our focus is going to be that twenty to twenty-five percent of the property tax bill that Sedgwick County's responsible, but I also would like to have a discussion about that other seventy-five percent that's for the schools and, and the cities and the rest of that tax bill, so.
Yeah.
I know it's a separate discussion, but I, but I think it's, you know, holistic, we needed, we needed to address it all.
Yeah. Good. Appreciate that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say, we did have an update in the, in the final work of the Appraiser after, I guess, after the appeals process has passed a date, whatever, they were able to, if you will, define, if you will, the, the assessed value change for Sedgwick County for this year. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we were working under the assumption it was about a seven point nine percent assessed value increase in Sedgwick County, and we were planning on, we were trying to do, if, again, I think management and staff were targeting, if you will, to capture five percent of the seven point nine percent. And if I understand correctly, that number that came in, I believe, eight point six percent. And so that brings up a couple of questions on my mind. Go ahead.
I can, this, Lindsey Purcell, your CFO, yes, I can confirm that.
Can you validate those numbers?
Yes.
It was seven point nine percent, and now, we, we thought it would be seven point nine, and now it's, comes in at eight point six.
Right, so when those original, when that seven point nine figure was percent, excuse me, figure was computed, we were making assumptions about what would happen with state-assessed utilities. After that actually came down, we learned that it was more, much more than expected, and that actually brought the total estimated assessed value growth to eight point six for Sedgwick County. Again, recognizing we won't have a final number until mid-October.
Okay. And so, and I, I don't, I talked to someone on City Council, and they thought that their, their jurisdiction, they thought that number was about eight point four percent. I've not validated their numbers, but it, it's also higher than they had planned, which I guess the news of the day, they talked about this yesterday in their budget workshop, that they thought they were, they were going to target, trying to lower their mill levy by, by half a mil, which was pretty big news, I guess. But anyway, for us, I know there's some discussion, we need to have a discussion here about what, what do we really want? Manager, when you put your budget in, did you have the eight point six percent knowledge when you put your budget in for manager's recommended?
We, right at the end, yes, we did, but the, I think what staff spent a lot of time on, it's not so much what the assessed value was, what do we need to run government? That really becomes the question here for all governments, that partake of property tax distribution, is what do you need to run government and try to curb it down as much as you can? So, we had talked about a five, five and a half percent capture, which allows a certain amount of dollars to come in to provide services that this commission and, and the people, I think, want, and that's the great debate we'll have over the next six weeks before we adopt the budget, but whether that was, we worked under the premise that it was going to be seven point nine, when eight point six came in, it really didn't impact how we were calculating because we're trying to go with the minimum amount of dollars needed to run the government.
And so, is the recommended budget still targeting a five point, a five percent capture of the?
The recommended budget, which you will get on the ninth, will recommend five point five.
Five point five, and that's an increase from what was, I think, for a long time, there was some effort to, to target five, and it sounds like we were able to, I guess, based on the very last-minute news, mount that to five point five.
That really had nothing, whether it was seven point six or eight point six or whatever, what drove that five to five point five was the nine-one-one emergency communication positions and the budget needs that we felt were critical for the upcoming year. That's what drove that number a half a percent higher, and it's, the commission, of course, has total authority over this budget after it's presented on, there's going to be several variables within the budget that we will present to you very clearly, that the commission can modify and adjust to get us to the number that we feel like we need to run county government for the next year.
And if I could add to that, remember, the same day the recommended budget is presented is also your last update. It is the day where you set the maximum amount of budget authority and the maximum property tax levy that you could possibly impose. So, it sets the ceiling, you can always come down from that if you want to, on budget adoption day, but that's why, that was part of what drove it, too, is it gives the commission some flexibility also to make any adjustments that you all feel are necessary when you get to budget adoption in August.
And that same day, do we need, is, when is the resolution that we have to pass, a resolution that says we, whether or not we intend to exceed the revenue-neutral rate?
Will be that same.
Same day.
Agenda item.
But it's the same agenda item?
As the last update, that's.
So, it's one resolution with one vote for both, both points. Do we know, and I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize if you don't have the answer, or do we, we can just get this later, I think I already know the answer anyway, but what do we, what do we believe the Consumer Price Index or rate of inflation has been for the last, let's see, let's say, the last twelve months going into this budget cycle? What are we dealing with in terms of rate of inflation?
So, if we were just to look at the last twelve months together, it's probably around three point five percent on average, but it's coming down. And so, if we were just to look at this point year-to-date, I think it's around two point nine. But again, one of the other things we always like to look at, too, are what are expiring TIPS and TDS that are coming on that were intended to increase your property tax, also what other adjustments were necessary because of change in use in property or new property, and so that becomes a part of the conversation as well.
And if we were to go with the manager's recommended budget, it captures a five point five percent of the total assessed value increase, if we were to do that, what would be the extent, what would be the mill levy that that would create? Do we know?
It's about an eight point, a point eight-five mill levy reduction from twenty-eight point seven, so that would put you at about twenty-seven point eight-five. And again, that's the recommended rate, the technically adjusted rate will certainly be different. And again, part of that is the one point five mils that is set by WSU, that will fully capture all eight point six percent of that assessed value growth, that's not anything that, at this point, the commission can influence, so that's a part of that levy as well, and that mill levy rate.
Okay. And then, just to be clear, the revenue-neutral rate number, we would have to drop our mill levy by, I think, a little bit more than two mils to get to the threshold of revenue-neutral rate.
Yes, it was, it was just north of twenty-six mils on the sheet that we were provided by the county clerk's office.
Yes, I think it's like twenty, it's like two point, two point two or two point three mils, we'd have to drop it something like that.
I would, I would want to do that math, I think versus twenty-seven point eight, it's maybe not quite that much, but it would be significant.
Just a point of conversation here, and again, I, I've had some constituents reach out that they are, they're, they're not thrilled with the one point five mils for WSU, and one of the arguments is, I think we've had the same argument legislatively, and I don't know, I don't want to offend WSU, I know they do great work and they're very important I know they do great work and they're very important to our community. But it seems odd if we were to capture anything less than the full amount, then there's essentially a transfer of, you know, we, if, for example, if they were held to the same rate that everything else was held to, the, the total dollars we would need would actually be slightly less than that 5.5%. It would be something smaller. And the reason it's 5.5%, again, using your number, is we have to raise enough revenue to give the WSU the full 8.6% increase. So again, they're going to have an 8.6% increase by law. And the question comes is, you know, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem reasonable. Just for example, Consumer Price Index is around 3%. For them to have nearly a 9% increase in their revenue just means that they are going to have more dollars than needed to just remain flat in the level. So the question comes up, you know, what are we going to do about this? And I think there's all kinds of options. I've asked just, just a number of options here that need to be explored, whether or not we can split the 1.5 mills with Wichita, or can we essentially set ourselves a cap or a growth rate cap on what we're willing to provide. And again, if we were to do that legally, whether we can even get there or not. But it, I think there has been some desire by at least people, some folks in my district are really pushing kind of hard to, to find different ways of not providing the full assessed value increase to WSU in light of the fact that our budget's growing at something much less than Consumer Price Index is far less. So, you know, for us to do that, we actually have to, you know, treat them specially because the law does require that. So I don't know what to do with this, but I guess the discussion needs to, needs to happen. And I would love to know what our options are. One of the, one of the things, you know, is, for example, we have, I was going to throw out a round number, about a half of mil obligation for some, from capital improvement projects that we've committed to for long periods of time. But that leaves about one mil that frankly is really, is just to support for WSU from the county, from Sedgwick County Government. We're levying about one mil just because we are doing this on behalf of Wichita. And if we were to not do that, unless you change the state law, they would have to levy the one mil. There's a lot of interpretation to get there. And whether this is going to be split or not, there's really a giant legislative question. So I don't know where we're going with this, but I would just say that the difference between the county levying that one mil and the city levying that mil is about $2 million to Wichita State. The difference in our mill levy, what's, what's one mill levy worth in Sedgwick County versus one mill levy in the city of Wichita is about $2 million. And considering the size of their budget, it's, in my opinion, it's not a, it's not super significant to their budget for a $2 million adjustment. But it is, in my opinion, very important to the constituents that we serve to get our mill levy as low as possible. So I just, it is a discussion I think we need to continue to have.
And to follow up on that, I think we're, we're most happy to have that conversation. Unfortunately, well, unfortunately, unfortunately, I guess, depending on how you're looking at it, we have passed the point for this budget cycle where we can do anything for the 2026 budget. So we would need to have these conversations for the 2027 budget. Again, as you point out, we've, we've passed a deadline in the agreement with the city of Wichita in terms of when we can give them notice if we would intend to back out. And like you've mentioned, the legislative session is...
Around May 1st, I think. Is that the date? So we, I guess I'd just like this, this conversation to continue. Nothing will happen this year. They will obviously get the 8.6% because there's, we have no, no other thing we can do. That will absolutely going, that's absolutely going to happen no matter what we do. But I think the conversation is a worthy conversation. And...
Well, especially if you want to get it on a legislative platform. That happens late this year. So yes, I agree, that conversation. And you want to give notice to WSU, of course.
So I'll just say this, some of my ideas I'm working on right now, a couple, a couple of things are policy resolutions that might, yes, I think we ought to consider, similar to the resolution that says that we restrict property tax dollars to be used for core functions of government. Similar to that, I've got another idea on a very similar resolution that has something slightly different. I have some spending changes I'm working on. I am not ready to present that today, but I am working on a number of things. And then I've got some, some kind of larger ideas, I like, kind of like this, that are going to require some discussions. So I've talked with Tom and Lindsay and Justin, and I know they're, they're pretty much aware of some of the ideas I'm thinking about. So just to let the commission know, I am working on a number of things. I'm not ready to present them today, but I am, I have some things up my sleeve, so to speak. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Wise?
I just wanted to bring up some of the pressures that we're feeling on this budget, just so the public knows, is a lot of heavy lifts and asks coming from our public safety side of our core function. So big ask in 911, some ask in EMS, sheriff. So those are all things that we need to consider. When we did our budget simulator, some of the initial feedback that we got from the public that participated in that is that public safety is very important. They want to see investment in that. They are seemingly okay with that investment. And then maybe a focus on raising fees to help cover some of those services. So I just wanted to make that public, that, that we're working through that. A lot of big budget requests and really budget needs going towards our public safety. And then everything that Commissioner Howell brought up is, is really big ticket items that we can dive into. And I'm really interested in some of his ideas as well. So, thank you.
Okay. I would just add, the three, there's many priorities, but the three that have been on top of my list is the continued staffing stabilization. We've worked really hard the last, since I've been on the commission, this is my, my third budget. We've worked really hard to secure staffing stability and the outputs are significantly better. The efficiency is much better. So that's a credit to the commission and previous commission for the work there. That needs to remain a priority. The second is the public safety investment, particularly at 911. We have asked, Laura Forshi for many years has asked for investments there, and we have asked her to make some investments there now. So from my seat, I'm going to support the model and support the modernization of that office, and it's a heavy investment. And the last is property tax relief, is that our constituents are expecting us to live within our means in many regards. And so I would, I would also say that, you know, this process for the public began in February with the commission. The recommended budget that's coming from the manager's office isn't just something that was his opinion. This is on guidance that we have given the manager of what we're expecting and what we're hoping for. And then the smaller details and the finicky details in working out the budget, coming after that, there's a baseline that has had a lot of commission input that's going to deliver the recommended budget. So the underlying factor that I also think that needs to be discussed, and it's not necessarily a budget factor for this year, but the use of sales tax versus our dependence on property tax needs to continue in this community. We have several cities that are doing sales tax initiatives. Mays is getting ready to do one, a ballot initiative. The city of Wichita is talking about options. We've talked about internal options. How do we use property taxes here versus sales tax dollars that we already have internally? I want to continue that discussion and move that discussion forward rather quickly. But also about any sort of incremental sales tax that can offset property tax dollars and reduce property tax dollars. That is a community conversation we need to continue to have. So just a couple of thoughts here. I want to make sure that we're getting the most out of our budget discussions. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just since you brought that up, I just want to, I guess, confess and disclose that I have requested a resolution draft that deals with a 0.25% sales tax. The intent would be to fully fund our culture, recreation, and a number of other things.
Okay.
A portion of that would be to, I know it sounds, some people might be surprised by this, but a portion of that funding would go to the multi-agency center. Some of the funding would be used for, like a child advocacy center and EMC, U and ICAC. It would fully fund the rec and cultural portions of our budget and a number of other things that right now are discretionary, I think, important to Sedgwick County, but they are not core functions of government. And to fund those things, a 0.25% sales tax would be a quarter on $100 worth of spending. And if you spent, you went and bought our new car for $30,000, it's $75 one time. So that's, you know, kind of the full spectrum there. You would pay that much money on a large purchase like a car, you would pay 25 cents on $100. People say, well, that's a regressive towards people who are, you know, are very low income. I'd like to remind everyone that your rent, your mortgage, your, your auto insurance, your home insurance, your groceries, your utility bills, including things like electrical and gas and water sewer, none of those things have sales tax applied. So everything that deals with housing is, is sales tax free. And again, I would suggest any type of food you buy at the store, it does have a 1% sales tax for the county, and there's good reason for that, actually. It was voter approved to be that way back in 1985. But there's no state, no state sales tax on food. And if you're on Tanah, Wicker, Tanah, Wicker, Snap, there's no sales tax, even on the county's 1%. They're exempt from that as well. So if you're low income, the things you need to live, food and housing are not taxed for sales tax. But we do currently tax those very same people through their rent or through their mortgage for property taxes. And we do threaten them to take their homes away if they don't pay their taxes. So trying to get away from using people's housing as a way to fund discretionary things that we all enjoy and support and appreciate, and threaten to take their homes away because they don't pay their taxes, they may never go to the zoo. They may never go to Exploration Place if they can't afford it. But at the end of the day, they have to pay those taxes. If they don't pay them, they may lose their housing. And it makes a higher, higher burden for them to live if they're, if they're very low income. The property tax, in my opinion, is a, is a burden. Housing is a, is almost the most important thing in, in the world. Almost everyone is where are you going to, where are you going to spend the night? Having a place to stay. And so my, my opinion, moving this from property tax to sales tax actually is a very good policy. If you want to spend a lot of money, using discretion to spend money on buying retail items, you make that choice to spend that, that rate of 25 cents for $100 worth of spending. And to do that, Mr. Chairman, we, my calculations are we would lower our mill levy by four mills. Sedgwick County would lower, our mill levy would go down by four mills. At the same time, we would fully fund all of the culture and rec and a number of other things. I have a list of things that I think need to be on that list of funding. And it seems to be there's actually more money that would generate about $35 million. We would, we would retain it solely for Sedgwick County's use to offset property taxes and to fund discretionary things in our budget. And in doing that, we would actually, again, my, my list of things to fund right now is, is being developed. But I would tell you that there's actually more money there than, than there are things right now that I think should be funded through this. So it's trying, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out the numbers. But the beautiful thing about this is, like for Exploration Place, for example, as sales tax revenues increase, when the economy continues to have a 3% or 4% CPI, that generates a little bit more money to sales tax funds. If we get into recession and those funds dwindle, then there is a, almost an absolute requirement, they have to tighten their belt. But for most years, as economy continues to increase, which is what happens over, you know, year after year, decade after decade, the economy continues to climb, that generates more money. They would have more money going into this fund, which would be potentially available to things like Exploration Place. Right now, they've been static. And in fact, they've actually received a $200,000 cut last year. And those cuts, in my opinion, are probably going to be almost a necessity for anything that's not a core function of government. They're going to continue to struggle with funding. That's just the reality. When they were here, they talked about their budget requests in our budget hearings we had with our, with our commissioners. I said to them then, I said it in this room recently, we have to move the culture and rec off of property tax. There is no other long-term option. And no one else right now is leading on this. And so I have requested the resolution, and it's coming to the commission very soon. And my goal is to get this on a ballot for voter approval at the, it sounds like the most, because it has to go through legislature to get approved, and also has to have approval of the commission before it goes on a ballot. So we probably wouldn't see this on the ballot until November of 2026. But there is a plan, and I'm working on it, and I'm very close to getting this where I can show this publicly and show it to you all. But I just want you to be aware, there is a resolution request. I'm working on it. And the intent is to lower property taxes, to protect people's housing, and to put culture and recreation and those other discretionary things, which we all value, put them under a, a sales tax, which doesn't hurt people who are low income. Yeah, I know the argument is it does, and I'll argue it does not. Believe me, I've spent a lot of time thinking about, thinking about this. So again, I know everybody is, you know, sales taxes seem like they're popular. And I think if you look at the, the reason why funding from the state has been cut to support local government, and we don't want to go to property taxes to fund large parts, large parts of government these days, sales tax seems to be the only real option. But the beautiful thing is, it is voter approved. And in my resolution, it also includes a sunset. It has to be re-approved every so often. So if people, people say, well, you didn't do what you said you would do. You didn't lower the property tax. Well, that sunsets, it goes away then. They have a chance to vote on this again. And then in the resolution, if it ever doesn't pass, it's gone forever. The entire process has to start completely over again if you want to go back and try to get, try it again. So to the extent we keep our word with the people, there's a sunset built in. And so I think it's just a better way to fund government, this type of government. And I have a few more things I'll say about this during other. But Mr. Chairman, I just want you to be aware that there is a request from me to staff to generate this resolution. Thank you.
I appreciate that. That's helpful. Okay. Lindsay, appreciate the work. Justin, we need to receive and file. There's a lot of discussion there. Is this something? Okay. I think it's appropriate. We're under budget discussion. I want to make a motion to receive and file commission comment. Motion, a second. Adam Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Next item, please.
Federal grants discussion.
Do we have anything under federal grants needs discussed? Okay?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Moving on. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Anything under committee reports you'd like to share with the public? Okay. Seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Meitzner?
Just want to share with the fellow commissioners and the public, I have returned from the, the World Air Show in Paris, and Anisa from our office, from finance, attended as well. And she's not here today, but there was a lot of information, and we would like to plan on, at the next meeting, Anisa will kind of give a, help present a summary of our, of that trip. I've got some information that I'd be glad to, I'm going to share with fellow commissioners on all the meetings. And it was incredibly impressive. It's 2,500 exhibitors. It's quite large. But we visited with a lot of key suppliers in Kansas. And, you know, there's 450 aviation suppliers in Kansas and 350 in our Wichita area. And it's incredibly important that the world does know that, that the Wichita brand of the air capital of the world is alive and well. WSU played a key lead, leadership with NIR and WSU Tech, Senator Moran, Mayor, Mayor Lilly, Wu was there. But a lot of key meetings happened and met with Boeing on their, their plans as they, if they get the final closing documents on, on the acquisition of Spirit, maybe later this year might be the final. They're very excited about coming back with their presence in the community in a, in a positive way. Textron, Bombardier, of course, those are, those are the big ones. But then there are many, many smaller suppliers that, and a lot of people are interested in expanding their current business here. But also, thanks to, I think, Senator Moran's presence in the commercial and the military aviation world, there's a lot of companies wanting to land an office or land a presence in the Wichita area to help support the expansion of what's going on in the, in the military world and the cybersecurity world and all of, all of that. So anyway, we'll have a more, I think, a more thorough presentation of the summary, working with GWP to make sure we can share what we can that's not considered initial, you know, confidential type meetings. But I think you'll all enjoy. And you, you all, thank you for supporting, allowing me and Anisa to, to attend this. And we owe you and the, and the public a nice report summary. So thank you again.
Appreciate it. Welcome home.
Yep.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, report back. Last Wednesday evening, June the 18th, I did conduct a town hall from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Derby City Library. I'll be doing that again later this year. I did one earlier this year. This will be three per year. And I just wanted to say, we did have a few people show up. It wasn't well, in my opinion, it was not well-attended. But the subject matter was extremely interesting, and we had some excellent discussion. It was extremely educational, and I found great value in, in having the town hall and having people show up and ask good questions. It is online on YouTube. If you want to watch that, that event, you can see it. It is, again, it's 90 minutes, a little bit long, but there's great information presented there and great questions. And so I would, I would encourage people to go see that. And again, later this year, I believe it's in October, I'll be doing this again, another town hall. That's be three this year. I did write a, an op-ed this last week, which is, I think, coming out in the publication of the Derby Informer Today. Basically, you know, I am, I am a little bit, I guess, disappointed, and I understand it. But there's a great amount of apathy, the people that we serve. There, there's a lot of frustration and anger. I wrote last month about why are people angry? And I understand why they're angry. I get it. I can be angry too, about the reasons that cause people to be angry about their taxes. I think it can be dissected and understood. There's, there's things we can address in our processes, I think, to help, if you will, deal with the, the anger that people are feeling about the size and scope of government. The burden of government is getting unwieldy, unwieldy, if you will. This, this week, my article is on apathy. And again, when I have a town hall and no one shows up, that just means, it just surprises me. You know, we have a, you know, I'll tell you, we're going to have two budget hearings coming up. And I would, I would tell you, if it's like other years, we have very few people show up at a budget, at a public budget hearing, intended to be focused on our budget. And I know people are busy, but the, but the apathy is duly noted. And I guess I just want to say, we need to find ways of, I guess, doing a better job of communication. We have a great communications department, but I think we need to find other ways of, of getting information out and hopefully pulling people's opinions and exchanging our, our thoughts, what we do and what are we worried about, concerned about, what do they want from us? We, somehow we've got a, I think we have to deal with this issue of apathy. But anyway, I do think it's an article that needed to be written. And I would just continue to say, I'm, I'm concerned that people are very, again, they're very upset, they're very critical, they're, they're, they don't like what government does today. I think a lot of it deals with, they may not realize exactly what's all going on. They don't know how it works. I think we have some opportunities there. But apathy is a pretty big problem. I would say this, that I also, I was invited over to my co-heysal's DAB 3, DAB breakfast that they do. I was able to speak at that for about an hour. And we went through some, a great amount of detail. And I wanted to say thank you to Lindsay once again. She provides excellent data. And I present that data to people and I explain it. You know, my, my walk, when I walk away from that, I have to tell you that you may, we may not like the, the cost of government because it feels like a heavy burden. But when you realize how efficient Sedgwick County has gotten, how much staff we have not added, how much wages have been held down, how many services have increased, if you will, you compare this to assessed value or CPI or wage income, or if you will, the price of government, and you see the cuts that the state has made to the, to the local government are higher dependency on property taxes. And yet, we've not increased our, our property tax burden to follow any of those trends, or we've been much more conservative. And it goes on, even before I was here, it's not, I can't claim credit for this. I would tell you, the Sedgwick County, our staff has done a great job for a very long time of honing in on efficiencies. And if you look at paper, it is actually incredibly impressive. So as I walk away from that discussion, I have to tell you that I am incredibly impressed that Sedgwick County is a very unique, I guess, almost a poster child, a good, poster child of good government. So when the legislature is focused on doing something to rein in local government because we're wasteful or out of control, or we're inefficient, I would love to have a sit-down with anybody who thinks that, or come and present it to your HOA group, or to your neighborhood association, or to your church, or to your organization of any type, and go through this data. And I think you'll walk away saying, wow, Sedgwick County is, is incredible. I don't claim credit for this. I give our staff full credit. But we have, as an organization, really honed in on efficiencies. And that data is incredibly impressive. And I, one of my biggest concern is how to hold that line. I think we're going to continue to be very conservative in the future, but I'm, I'm very, very impressed. And I love, I love that type of presentation. So that DAB board, again, it was a small gathering, about 10 or 15 people. But that, that subject matter is, is just, it is... that subject matter is, is just, um, it is incredibly important. And I would just want to say, any group out there that's listening that wants to have a greater understanding of exactly how Sedgwick County provides services and how do we know we're being efficient? Man, would I love to share that with you all. So let me know if I can come and talk to a group of yours. And then finally, um, this Friday, two days from today, that's, uh, June 27th, I'm having another one of my coffees. It's six, I'm sorry, 7:30, excuse me, 7 o'clock AM to 9 o'clock AM. It's come and go. I'll present some of this information there as well, some of the budget details that we're working on right now. I took coffee, I provide the coffee. There's also other, other things you can drink there too. But this is a, it's called Cup of Joe with Jim. It's at the 1636 East Patriot Avenue in the gymnasium of Calvary Baptist Church of Derby. It's in the 1636 East Patriot, 7 to 9 AM. Come and go as you please. Coffee's provided, the conversation's great. I'd love to see some new people come out and have a fresh conversations about what is Sedgwick County doing? What are our challenges? I'd love to hear from you. What do you want us to change? How, what are you, what are you unhappy about? Please come talk, talk with us. I have actually 43 events this year where I'm trying to interface with the public and most of them are almost, almost nobody shows up. I have 106,000 constituents. Again, I think people are apathetic, so I'm inviting you once again, please engage this opportunity. If you're mad about your government, I'm listening, I would love to hear why. Let's talk about it. And I'd love to explain, what are we doing here? And maybe share some information that might make you feel a little bit better or maybe we'll find some stuff we can change that we, I need to, I need to understand from your perspective what we need to focus on. So please come out to coffee on Friday from 7 to 9 AM. Uh, I would love to see you out there. Thank you so much.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you. Any other, uh, we're on other, anything else you'd like to share? I would just like to say that, um, our friendly county clerk, Kelsey, this is her last meeting with us. She's moving on to a couple of opportunities, so congratulations on that and we'll miss you here. You've done a great job, um, dealing with us and keeping a meeting organizing going in the same direction. So, Kelsey, best of luck. We appreciate all the work and the service she gave to Sedgwick County.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive session.
Okay. We do have an executive session. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess in the executive session for 20 minutes until 11, you want to call it 11:15 or 11:10? Let's call it 11:15 so we can get there. Until 11:15 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss legal advice on contractual matters. And that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:15.
Okay. That's a motion. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We'll be back 11:15.[789.82]